The November 18th, 2024 Legislative Session of the Anarundel County Council is called to order. Please ensure all phones and electronic devices are set to silence. We will begin with the invocation and pledge of allegiance. Mr. Volkey?
Good evening. Please join me as I pray in a manner consistent with my faith, please pray in a manner consistent with yours. Father God, thank you for bringing us together again to do the people's business. Thank you for the opportunity we had earlier this evening to celebrate 60 years of charter government here in Anarundel County. Thank you for the people who have sacrificed and served our county so that we can have the government and the infrastructure and the just wonderful place that we have to live and work and to raise families here in the center of this great state. God, we just pray that you'll be with us this evening, give us the ability to make wise decisions, give us your hand and your counsel as we go forward and make our votes. It's in your name we pray. Amen.
One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Secretary, please read the ethics statement.
The Ethics Commission has asked that I advise you that under certain circumstances, members of the public may qualify as lobbyists when they testify before the county council. If so, the law requires that certain information be filed with the Ethics Commission. The Chair of the Ethics Commission has asked that those who wish to testify in any form review the general information on lobbying sheet located on the Ethics website under forms and publications. If there are any questions about lobbying requirements, please contact the Ethics Commission at 410-222-4412.
Thank you. Before we open our discussions and public hearings, I would like to remind everyone in attendance, whether testifying or as a member of the audience, we must maintain decorum at all times within these chambers. Please understand that individual conversations in the audience are very disruptive to the proceedings. I would kindly ask you to step out of the chambers if a side discussion is necessary. We will now open our invitation to audience. This is an opportunity to speak briefly on any subject not included on the printed agenda. Madam Secretary, did we receive any testimony through the online testimony tool?
Yes, we received one piece of testimony which was shared with the council, added to the record, and posted to the website.
We will now call on individuals who signed up ahead of the meeting. When I call your name, please come to the table and have a seat. When it is your turn, state your name and address for the record. Remarks will be limited to two minutes. Please listen for the buzzer and respect the two-minute time limit as others are signed up to speak. This evening, I have one individual signed up in advance, Mr. Jim Bonjorno.
My name is Jim Bonjorno and I live in Odenton across from Gork Park. You have my online testimony. The field lights at Gork Park were blazing for hours on empty fields a week ago Friday. The situation has improved a bit since then now that there are fewer practices. However, my neighbors and I have no assurance that this problem won't start again next season, so I've come before you again tonight to plead my case. Now, my wife of 45 years thinks I'm crazy. She asked me, "Why do you keep going back when they refuse to respond to your complaint? They're not being respectful." And of course, everyone wants to be treated with respect. I told her, "Perhaps the third time will be the charm and the councils will come around and live up to their mission statement to make Anarundel County the best place for all." She responded, "Right. If you believe that, then I have a bridge in Brooklyn to sell you." I laughed and said, "Well, you know what happened the last time a local government refused to listen to me?" She said, "Oh, no. You wouldn't run for public office again, would you?" I asked, "Why not? I'm merely a senior citizen and clearly I have plenty of time on my hands. It's been a while since I ran for public office. I won then, I can win again." And I seem to have hit a chord. Other citizens are starting to complain about fieldlight abuse in their communities. Why not give it another go? Perhaps I can form a coalition to clear the dead wood and lower property taxes, just like I did the last time. Besides, and Counselor Hummer, you may want to take note, four is my lucky number. Happy Thanksgiving and arrivederci for now.
Happy Thanksgiving, sir. Is there anyone else in the audience who wishes to speak on items not on the printed agenda? You can come forward at this time. We have six seats. Sir, state your name and address for the record. You have two minutes.
Name is Gary Muller, Jessup, Maryland. For years, thousands of citizens and hundreds of former council members have supported and voted on land use policies and zoning code designed to make Anarundel County the best place for all. Now, this council has been busy at work watering down our zoning codes to allow unbridled development by increasing density, reducing recreational areas on properties, increasing land coverage, providing the gift to developers called fee-in lieu of, ignoring infrastructure needs, and reducing setbacks, and also, very important, and holding OPZ responsible for enforcing the existing codes. I could go on, but I think you get the point, that I'm not happy with the current batch of code or bills that have been in here that are trying to basically undo the work of former councils and thousands of people that have been here in this seat testifying in the past. Thank you.
Thank you. Ma'am?
All right. My name is Jill Bennett. I'm a small business owner. I'm from actually Joppa, Maryland, 16 to end Bridewells Court. I'm a small business owner that started a seasonal community, family events, and entertainment business here in Anarundel County back in 2001, and my business was displaced, but now I'm operating in Baltimore County due to development. I also am also the president of a nonprofit benefiting theater and arts. The reason I'm here today is I attended the town hall and listened to the needs of the Crownsville Memorial Park for the community as well as plans for its future, and I believe that our businesses and my business can fit in nicely to help benefit the park. Over the past 10 years, my husband and I have been trying to get back to Anarundel County to do events and entertainment, and I feel that the location would be ideal. The plan would be to start a nonprofit and offer community events to raise money for any of the projects to support the property in healing health and wellness, to include education and fundraising. These events and educational programs would benefit the community in helping build the trails in the woods, also hiring from the community, including those healing from addiction and recovery and theater and art activities, giving back to the community in restoration of the property and creating the museum. Our events would have limited time operation, minimal impact, yield major benefits to the mission of the property. We have a long history in Anarundel County, have been working to bring it back, events and attractions since 2014. Not only would we bring something fun back, but we'd give back to the community that has given so much to us and help support the goals and missions of the Crownsville property. We did a nonprofit fundraiser up in Baltimore County. We did a Halloween trail. We raised a lot of money. We met with the local community and we answered questions that they had regarding concerns. After operating this season, they were very pleased. They trusted in us, what we do professionally, and realized the benefit to the area. We donated a very, a brand-new audio system to the gym for theaters and plays at a local school. Many of the communities enjoyed the events. They have expressed interest in playing more of a role in our future events, and one of our next planned events is to do a color run. Thank you.
Thank you. Sir?
Name is Paul Higgins. I'm from Pasadena. I want to talk just to you, the council, tonight about the Woodholm-Jumper's Hole Road Evening Star project. There was a meeting November 6th. I did not attend. Sometimes it's good that you don't be in the meeting and let others have a voice. But the feedback I got from that meeting is astounding, okay? When county engineers look at us and say, "We're doing this, we're doing it, and that's it," okay, there's nobody listening, there's no accountability. When I read the justification in the budget appropriation bill, it says, flat out, it says, "As well as access to the Woodholm community," meaning improve access to the Woodholm community. When the engineer says, "Well, you folks in Woodholm are just gonna have to turn and go out through Creekstone, go out through Evening Star, and you'll make a right and then you'll go out at that light." Well, what the hell do we need a light on Jumper's Hole Road for if we gotta go down and go out that way? They got a back entrance. We don't. And this light's gonna do nothing but jam up that road. They even admitted that the traffic is gonna get worse, and they're gonna see how they wanna adjust the light with the light at Walmart to improve the situation. That's not how you do traffic engineering, folks. You do it by doing studies, you do models, and you know what the cause is gonna be, okay? We played by the process in Woodholm, and right now, we're, they even told my residents, "You gotta stand up and be heard." Well, I'm gonna be heard, okay? I played by the rules. I can tell you, they're 30% design. They don't have all the money in the budget. They haven't put in there to move the utilities.
Thank you, sir.
They haven't put in there to do the roads, so they're just blowing smoke.
Thank you, sir.
I'm sorry.
That's okay. Thank you, sir.
Madam Chair, real quick, can I just ask one question to one of the respondents, just to clarify?
Sure.
Was your seasonal, that was, did you run the seasonal event that was in Jessup for all those years? Okay, I thought, okay, all right.
We were in your area.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. This is the last call for invitation to audience. If there's anyone in the audience that wants to come forward at this time. Seeing no movement, the invitation to audience is now closed. Is there any item any council member would like to place on the agenda this evening? Ms. Dyer?
Thank you. I got the nod that it's my turn. After continued discussions with AACPS, the administration requests withdrawal of Resolution 4824.
Thank you. May I have a motion that the partial reading of any bill, resolution, amendment to a bill or resolution, or minutes constitutes the reading of the whole?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The motion carries. Madam Secretary, please read the minutes of November 4th, 2024.
The county council meeting was called to order by Chair Pickard at 7:00 PM. It was opened with the invocation given by Ms. Hummer and was followed with, by the pledge of allegiance. The meeting was held in the county council chambers in Annapolis, Maryland.
May I have a motion to approve the minutes of November 4th, 2024?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The motion carries. The minutes of November 4th, 2024 stand approved as read. Madam Secretary, please read the titles of the bills to be introduced this evening.
Bill Number 9324, An Ordnance Concerning Planning and Development, Master Plan for Water Supply and Sewerage Systems. Bill Number 9424, An Ordnance Concerning Boards, Commissions, and Similar Bodies, Finance, Taxation, and Budget, Agriculture Commission. Bill Number 9524, An Ordnance Concerning Public Ethics, Conflicts of Interest, County Council. Bill Number 9624, An Ordnance Concerning Subdivision and Development, Site Development, Pre-Built Short-Term Buildings.
Madam Secretary, please read the titles of any resolutions to be introduced this evening.
Resolution Number 4924, Resolution Approving the Application to the United States Department of Justice, Office of Justice Programs for a Grant Under the Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Assistance Grant Program, Federal FY 2024, Local Solicitation, and Recognizing the County Executive's Authority to Act in Connection with the Grant.
Thank you.
Madam Chair?
Yes, ma'am.
Madam Secretary, could I please be added as a co-sponsor to Bill 9424?
Noted. Thank you, Ms. Ledbetter. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number 75-24.
Bill Number 7524, An Ordnance Concerning Boards, Commissions, and Similar Bodies, Subdivision and Development, Zoning, Development, Mixed Use Districts.
This is an administration bill. Mr. Evelyn, when your team is assembled, you have the floor.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the county council. My name is Jansen Evelyn, Deputy Chief Administrative Officer, the Office of the County Executive. To my left is Tom, to my right is Lynn, and Kelly from the Office of Law. We have discussed this bill before, but the administration has one amendment. I believe it's numbered Amendment Number 7. Is that correct, Tom?
Are there any questions regarding Bill 7524 at this time from the council? We'll now open the public hearing on Bill Number 75.
Yeah, I know I jumped the gun a bit.
A little bit. We'll now open the public hearing on Bill Number 75-24. Madam Secretary, did we receive any testimony through the online testimony tool?
No, Madam Chair, we did not.
I don't currently have anyone signed up in advance. Is there anyone in the audience at this time that wants to speak on Bill Number 75-24? Okay. State your name and address for the record. You have two minutes.
Name is Gary Muller, live in Jessup, Maryland. My concern, and I have not read the current version, but what I'm concerned about is giving zoning decisions, making powers to bureaucrats and OPZ. I think it's inappropriate to not provide the citizens' inputs through their elected officials, so I have a problem with that. I have a problem with creating higher densities in the county. I don't know any place in this county that wouldn't be negatively, major negative impact with zoning such as R-22, R-40, and I even heard at one point people were talking R-60, very high density. And if, you know, I hear this thing, "Well, we need walkable communities, we need shop, places to shop, places to live, places to work in a community." That's Columbia, Maryland, okay? That's what Jim Rouse designed. If we want a utopia housing and shopping and living in Anarundel County, you need to find a couple hundred acres where you can do what Jim Rouse did in Columbia. Trying to put this utopia housing project in Anarundel County, West County, North County, Jessup, Laurel, Maryland City, or Brooklyn Park, it's not gonna work. We don't have the infrastructure. If you're looking at a utopia-type project, you need to start thinking about mass transit. We don't have mass transit. West County is roadblock no matter which road, whether it's 95, the Parkway, wherever. It's a roadblock day in and day out, noon time, rush hour, it doesn't matter. It's, this kind of density is just ludicrous and, as Georgie would say, dysfunctional.
Thank you. At this time, the public hearing on Bill 75-24 is now closed. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill 75-24.
Bill Number 7524, An Ordnance Concerning Boards, Commissions, and Similar Bodies, Subdivision and Development, Zoning, Development, Mixed Use Districts.
I believe we have two amendments this evening for Bill 75-24.
My understanding is that there are three amendments.
Okay. Well, there are. Okay. I didn't get the updated memo on that. If there's no questions for the administration, we'll go ahead and, Madam Secretary, please read Amendment Number 7.
Amendment Number 7. This amendment removes certain front setback requirements in mixed-use districts.
Mr. Evelyn, this is an administration amendment?
I'll turn the mic over to Tom. Is it Nye?
Yeah.
Yes, Mr. Nye.
Thank you very much. Yeah, this amendment removes the maximum front setback requirements in the bulk regulation for principal structure from the front lot line and for when it's located on a principal arterial road. Happy to answer any questions.
Motion to adopt Amendment Number 7. Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Volkey?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Can you give the justification for the amendment? Why is it that you all are seeking this?
Yes, Jansen Evelyn from the administration. Ultimately, the reason we want to have this amendment is because, as Mr. Nye said, one, it removes some of the front setback line items from the bulk chart. Specifically, by removing the maximum setback, it gives the developer flexibility. And the reason, the reason why we want to have this flexibility is in keeping with the spirit of mixed-use development, we want to remove unnecessary bulk regulations to maximize one, flexibility, but also creativity in design and the use.
Do you got a question? May I follow up?
You may.
Thank you. Okay, understood. So, is this something that you've seen that projects have encountered problems with a front setback that have been mixed use, or, I'm just trying to understand the impetus for this?
Yeah. I think ultimately the impetus, any bill that's proposed, we continue to get garner feedback, not just from staff, but also stakeholders. And when we see some of the, some of the mixed-use development that's occurring in other jurisdictions, we realize that we ultimately, we don't, we originally had it where the setback requirements were more akin to a town center, like the Odenton Town Center or parole. But after further review, after further discussion, we realize we don't need to mimic the town center concepts. Ultimately, because some of these mixed-use districts, one will be, whether it's village, whether it's suburban, whether it's urban, we want to make sure that the bulk regulations that can get in the way, particularly in the village or suburban structure or setting, it's not gonna be something that will ultimately trip them up. So, that's ultimately why, once we've, and again, we discuss this with some of the, some of the partners that will be doing the building, and many of them had raised a host of concerns, ultimately around some of the bulk regs. We, OPZ staff, public and OPZ staff, we ultimately took a look at it and we realized, you know what, this is one where, I don't want to call it give, but it's one where we realize that having that flexibility, it actually helps to create a better mixed-use product.
Mr. Volkey?
Thank you. Appreciate that. So, there will be no minimum setback, so now it'll be entirely within the discretion of the Office of Planning and Zoning in reviewing the application to decide where to put anything on a piece of property. Is that fair? At least on the front side?
Hi, Lynn Miller, Planning and Zoning. Currently, there's very minimal setbacks in our mixed-use districts, and that's intentional to provide for a lot of flexibility. We had initially added this because, as Mr. Jansen said, in our town centers, we have a similar type of maximum setback, which is different. Usually, the setback is a minimum. And that was to, because in the town centers, we specifically want buildings, to the extent possible, to be built up very close to the road frontage, to try to create that active street frontage. But as Mr. Jansen said, these five mixed-use districts may end up being applied in a variety of different places in the county, not necessarily all in town centers. So, we decided maybe it's not necessary to have this kind of maximum front setback in all of the mixed-use districts. So, you're correct, there would not be a minimum or a maximum setback, front, back, or sides.
Thank you.
Any other questions regarding Amendment Number 7? Mr. Smith?
Appreciate the dialogue over the last probably couple weeks when it comes to mixed-use, and just stating for the record, we have roughly, potentially up to 25 specific mixed-use properties, potentially, that could be impacted by this, by this legislation. 10 that are currently in place, and then 15 based off the region plans and everything else they could pass, another 15 that potentially could get impacted, so somewhere around 25. I've said this before, about 11 of those 25 are specifically in District 1, which is a lot. And so, I'm open to this provision. I know we had talked about that. I'll certainly support it because of the flexibility, because my conversations that we're gonna have later this week will hopefully make some adjustments, because what I don't want to lose out of this overall discussion is, again, it is eight people who should decide the fate of Anarundel County. Eight, seven of us, and the county executive upstairs. And so, what I would not want to do, certainly for District 1, is remove my ability to sort of influence what happens in those 10, potentially 11, mixed-use districts that are in there, because a lot of the communities, you know, they have, I had made a promise to some of the communities in the previous plans that we had voted on, that we would, they would have a voice at the table when it came to this process. And so, I want to keep that promise, and I'm hoping that you all can help me do that. It is certainly not to make it more challenging for the administration at all, but I do take my responsibility to, you know, commit to them and make sure that they have their desires sort of incorporated into the process. And so, I'm certainly gonna be supportive of this amendment, but later on down the road this week, I hope we can come to some sort of legislative efforts that can help maintain a balance where we still get to influence how future legislation is impacted in the area. It's not to, you know, make it, again, difficult for you guys, but, you know, I don't, I ran for this so I can speak for them, and I want to continue to do that even when we're past this process. So, I still love you all. Thank you.
Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Amendment Number 7.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Volkey?
Aye.
Ms. Hummer?
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler?
Nay.
Ms. Radbien?
Aye.
Ms. Ledbetter?
Nay.
Ms. Pickard?
Aye.
Four in the affirmative, three in the negative. Amendment Number 7 to Bill 7524 has been adopted.
Madam Secretary, please read Amendment Number 8.
Amendment Number 8. This amendment increases the maximum height permitted in MXDS.
Mr. Smith, this is your amendment. You have the floor.
Yeah, we had conversations with the admin over the last few weeks, and one of the things I uncovered was that there's a, the specific district that this amendment impacts, I think there are two mixed-S districts currently in the county, and they're both in District 1. We had, I had discussions with them previously because the max height was 150 feet. For this district, they've lowered it down to 144, I believe, in the bill itself, but there, if there is a place in the county that height should be allowed, and this is my opinion, it's certainly in this, in those two districts where there are currently three of the tallest buildings in the county. That's the Arundel Preserve, that's the Palisades, they're all like 14, 15 stories now. And so, this just makes sure we don't create an instance where, because I'm sure those buildings are like probably 14, 15 stories now, so this just makes sure they, it keeps the height designation in an area that I think is probably the most appropriate, because there are already three tall buildings there now that are closing in on that 150 feet, certainly, whereas if we modified it to the 144, it takes it below what we already have there. So, in my mind, it makes no sense to create an ordinance or a bill that identifies three buildings, then places them outside of what the maximum height is, because I know they're taller than 144 feet. So, 180 is like 15 floors is right where those buildings are now. So, that, my intent was to keep the tallest buildings right there because they already exist. The urban one, I didn't modify it to 168 feet, I think that's what it is, but those are really close and adjacent to the airport. And so, you know, I wasn't necessarily inspired about that location because the airport is right there, but this S district makes the most sense, which is why I chose to keep it at that, I think they have 15 floors in the one building, so it was, the goal was to keep it right in that area. That's why I added this amendment. motion stood up.
Is there a second?
Second.
Would the administration like to weigh in on Amendment Number 8?
Like the council member stated earlier, we've had lots of conversation, dialogue, and engagement. We were aware that We were aware that the councilman was going to introduce an amendment with regards to the height. All we'll note for the record is that we're not going to take an opposition position against this. I would note that the language, as we had proposed, in terms of the, as the mass and the height increase, we felt that was an appropriate scale. However, based on the representation that the council member has noted, we are not going to oppose his amendment.
Mr. Volkey.
Thank you. So, if I'm following along on page six of the bill correctly, where you identify each of the districts, and you give a description of what each district is intended to do, as well as giving the height, it looks like they all sort of go up in height, right? So, the village is the lowest, three stories, then the general is up to six, then the neighborhood is up to eight, suburban is up to 12, and then the urban is up to 14. So, if we were to do this, we're sort of making the suburban at 15, the highest district of these five categories, superseding or surpassing, if you will, the urban district. I guess I'm just trying to like follow the rational basis of how you all put it together, and whether I like it or don't like it, at least I can follow the logic of how you've done it. I'm curious, how does this impact that? I mean, you're sort of creating an incentive to do more height in a, what seems to be lower intensity district, and the administration's saying, we're not going to take a position in opposition. I just don't understand how this follows the rational basis of what y'all are trying to do in the bill.
I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Miller.
Hi, understood, Mr. Volkey. I think, you know, it's not only the building height, it's the allowed density, it's the range of uses that are allowed in each of the five districts. So, you're correct, our rationale in laying this out was sort of graduating up in terms of scale and massing. But given that there's still a graduation in terms of density allowed, there's still a variation in the uses allowed, and we understand Councilman Smith's concern about there being some existing development in the MXDS zone right now that have structures at that height. I don't, I don't think this amendment is going to, it's not going to blow apart the rationale that we had when we laid this out.
Mr. Smith, your light is on.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Ms. Fiedler.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is not a question, but adding to the conversation, the way that the mixed-use districts go in the bill with the increase as you go down, or up, however you look at it, between the districts, in the current bill, it's very sequential. With this amendment, it does create an intensified, or a higher height before the other ones. It reminds me a lot of the Marina District. MA Two and MA Three, we talked about this during zoning, comp zoning for Region Four. So, this is, if this amendment passes, to me, it would be very similar to what happens in the Marina District, just to say that we've seen it elsewhere in the code.
Any other questions regarding amendment number eight? Madam Secretary, please call the roll on amendment number eight.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
Ms. Hummer.
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
Ms. Radbien.
Aye.
Ms. Ledbetter.
Aye.
And Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Amendment number eight to Bill 7524 has been adopted.
Madam Secretary, please read amendment number nine.
Amendment number nine, this amendment increases the legacy provision to 36 months for uses in existence in mixed-use districts.
Mr. Volkey, this is your amendment. You have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This follows up on my discussion with Mr. Swain at the last meeting, when I was asking him about non-conforming uses and legacy uses in mixed-use districts, and I had identified that I thought that the 12-month cessation of use was a bit too short in terms of extinguishing that use and indicating that it could not be revived. So, this extends that from 12 to 36 months. Pretty straightforward. I ask for my colleagues' support. Move the amendment.
Is there a second?
Second.
Does the administration want to weigh in on amendment number nine?
Yes, we'll say that I, obviously, when I walked into the chamber yesterday, I found about the amendment, so it was my first notice of it, but I'm also, I also remember the spirited discussion between Mr. Swain and Councilman Volkey two weeks ago. While, while we don't, while our position is that this is not a necessary amendment, we also don't oppose it.
Are there any further questions on amendment number nine? Madam Secretary, please call the roll on amendment number nine.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
Ms. Hummer.
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
Ms. Radbien.
Aye.
Ms. Ledbetter.
Aye.
And Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Amendment number nine to Bill 7524 has been adopted.
Bill number 75-24 will come back on December 2nd, as amended. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill 77-24.
Bill number 7724, an ordinance concerning licenses and registrations towing companies.
Mr. Volkey, this is your bill. You have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So, we have discussed this bill quite a bit. I want to thank the Police Department, who has come out on multiple occasions and offered testimony. As indicated, just brief background, this is creating two classifications of towers in the county. There will be light-duty towers, there will be heavy-duty towers. Light-duty towers are more of what you see when you have a car accident on the road. Heavy-duty towers tend to be more if there's some sort of larger piece of apparatus that needs towing, or some sort of specialized equipment. In talking with the Police Department, this is something that is believed to improve response time for towers, so that we can more efficiently clear roadways and take care of hazards that have occurred, and using towers in a way that makes more sense. So, with that, we've talked about it. I hope the, I think the administration will support, and I hope my colleagues will too. Thank you.
The administration like to weigh in on Bill number 77-24?
Yes, Madam Chair. As noted previously, the administration supports this bill.
Is there any further discussion of my colleagues? We'll now open the public hearing on Bill 77-24. Madam Secretary, did we receive any testimony through the online testimony tool?
No, we did not.
I don't have anyone signed up in advance. If there's anyone in the audience that wishes to speak on Bill 77-24 at this time, you may come forward. Seeing no movement in the audience, the public hearing on Bill 77-24 is now closed. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill number 77-24.
Bill number 7724, an ordinance concerning licenses and registrations towing companies.
Seeing no further discussion, Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Bill 77-24.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
Ms. Hummer.
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
Ms. Radbien.
Aye.
Ms. Ledbetter.
Aye.
And Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Bill number 7724 has passed.
Thank you. That's a 7-0, Mr. Volkey.
Mark it down.
Mark it down. History was made tonight. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill number 78-24.
Bill number 7824, an ordinance concerning subdivision and development road design.
This is an administration bill. Mr. Evelyn, when you have your team assembled, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Tom Lee from the administration.
Oh, I'm sorry. I should be addressing you.
Jansen Evelyn, Deputy Administrative Officer. Raghu Padami from Inspection Permit. Lynn Miller from Office of Planning and Zoning. Sarah Fowler from Office of Planning and Zoning. And Christina Dyer from Office of Law. As discussed in the previous sessions, this bill proposes an update to the road design requirement to clarify when road frontage and right-of-way dedication improvements are required for new developments. It also clarifies declaration requirements for private roads and requires that when the developer includes new private roads in the development, they must record in land records that the cost of maintenance for the private roads shall be on the community association or HOA. The council or unit owners for Condo Regime, or in the absence of those, the homeowners of the units that abut the private road. This aligns our legislation with other major jurisdictions and with the industry's best practices. If passed, it takes the burden off the taxpayer and the county to come behind and provide improvements. We have one amendment to introduce and we'll discuss at appropriate time. Happy to answer any questions.
Are there any questions regarding 78-24 at this time? Seeing none, we'll now open the public hearing on Bill number 78-24. Madam Secretary, did we receive any testimony through the online testimony tool?
No, Madam Chair, we did not.
I have no one signed up in advance. Are there any individuals in the audience at this time that would like to speak on Bill 78-24? Sir? State your name and address for the record. You have two minutes.
My name is Derek Muller. I'm from West County, Jessup. I haven't read this whole thing, so, but what I will say is that road design is absolutely critical, and is, a lot of poor examples, if you want to see poor examples, might be Elm Street in Jessup. The poor design of the road infrastructure and that, and that development has caused numerous accidents on 175, as the residents are trying to avoid the maze of roads that the county and the developer put in place. The same thing is down on the property there, just east of that, where Lobos Park property. You go in there, and it's just a maze of roads, dead-end roads. I wouldn't want to be a delivery truck driver, or ambulance driver, or fire truck. I just see that, it's just amazing to me that the county and this council would approve roads that are such a mess, that it caused impact in people's lives, trying to get in and out of the development, and it's impacting the traffic. People are doing U-turns in the middle of 175, which is basically four lanes right there. It is bad news, and it's a poor example of, well, it's an example of lack of good planning in Anarondo County. I would hope that you would take a look at road design and make sure that a responsible adult is involved in approving and designing these roads in the future. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. The public hearing on Bill number 78-24 is now closed. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill number 78-24.
Bill number 7824, an ordinance concerning subdivision and development road design.
When your team is assembled, Mr. Smith, did you have a question?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just quickly, the DPW Design Manual, how often is that updated?
Mr. Raghu.
Raghu Padami with Inspection permit. So, DPW last published the Design Manual update last year, and they are currently in the process of ruling updates and meeting with stakeholders. So, the last time it was updated back, originally published in 1991, and they updated it back in last year, 2023.
Is there intent to have a more structured reviewing of it going forward?
I believe that's the direction DPW wants to proceed.
Because, I mean, because obviously, this bill takes a lot of that ambiguous language that's in law, and says, use the DPW Design Manual, essentially. Am I correct with this legislation? And so, you're basically referencing that instead of all these thousands of words within code, or within this, within the, yeah, within the code, and using that as the reference. And so, I'm just curious, what is the structure? Is there a body within DPW that is tasked to review that, or is that just, you know, one or two people that looks at it on a regular basis?
It's headed up by the Bureau of Engineering Deputy Director, and they have stakeholders that have been working internally and externally as a part of updating, ruling updates.
Thank you.
I believe the administration has an amendment to this bill.
Yes, we do.
Madam Secretary, will you please read amendment number four?
Amendment number four, this amendment clarifies the extent of improvements for certain public roads within a proposed development, requires the dedication and deeding of certain public roads, and clarifies that developers dedicate and deed sufficient property to ensure public roads can be improved into compliance with the DPW Design Manual.
Now I can proceed.
You may.
Eventually, I'll get the hang of it. The purpose of this is to make clear that the frontage needed is for all required improvements, and it's required for, I'm sorry, improvements for all abutted roads. But the developer, and this was something that we felt that the language had a bit of ambiguity in, we wanted to make sure that it was clear that developers required to construct improvements only when the abutted road also provides vehicular access to the site. That's ultimately what the purpose of this amendment is.
Is there a motion to adopt amendment number four?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Are there any questions regarding amendment number four? If I'm not mistaken, this is similar to the language that was changed, but it needed to be changed in a second place in the bill. Is that correct?
As I recall, but I would defer to Office of Law and Ms. Miller. But that's my understanding.
Okay. Yeah, some of the language in this section is changed in the bill as proposed, and then, as Mr. Jansen said, we wanted to further clarify, because in looking at the amended bill, I think some of the stakeholders were interpreting it differently from the way that we had intended. So, we wanted to make it clear when the developer is required to provide the property needed for improvements versus when they actually have to also construct the improvements. So, hopefully, this amended language will make that very clear.
Last call for questions on amendment number four. Seeing none, Madam Secretary, please call the roll on amendment number four.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Mr. Volkey.
Nay.
Ms. Hummer.
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
Ms. Radbien.
Aye.
Ms. Ledbetter.
Aye.
And Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
Six in the affirmative, one in the negative. Amendment number four to Bill 7824 has been adopted.
Thank you. Bill 78-24 will come, as amended, will come back on December 2nd, 2024. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill number 79-24.
Bill number 7924, an ordinance concerning personnel modification to classification plan, classified service and pay plan, exempt service positions in the, positions in the classified service police department.
This is an administration bill?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Tom Lee from the administration. With me at the table is Hannah Dyer, Chief, Deputy Chief and Initiative Officer, and Budowski from Office Personnel, and Lori Klossmeyer from Office of Law. Under County Code Section 61201(c)(2), the county council shall approve pay grade changes in the classification plan that are 10% or greater. With the adoption of amendment one, Bill 7924 makes in total three classification plan changes in the Police Department. One is grade reallocation of evidence coordinator leader classification from a grade NR16 to the grade NR18. A vacant position reclassification changing administrative assistant to grade OS4 to management aide grade NR12, and also reclassified the assistant chief in the Police Department from E7 to E8 to reflect appropriately the position's higher responsibility as second in command. Happy to answer any questions.
Are there any questions of my colleagues regarding Bill number 79-24? Seeing none, we'll now open the public hearing on Bill number 79-24. Madam Secretary, did we receive any testimony through the online testimony tool?
No, Madam Chair, we did not.
I have no one signed up in advance to speak on Bill number 79-24. If there's anyone in the audience that wishes to speak, please come forward at this time. Seeing no movement in the audience, the public hearing on Bill number 79-24 is now closed. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill number 79-24.
Bill number 7924, an ordinance concerning personnel modification of classification plan, classified service and pay plan, exempt service, positions in the classified service police department.
Seeing no questions from my colleagues, did the administration want to add anything before we take this vote?
Nothing to add.
Thanks. Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Bill number 79-24.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
Ms. Hummer.
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
Ms. Radbien.
Aye.
Ms. Ledbetter.
Aye.
And Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Bill number 7924 has passed.
Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill number 81-24.
Bill Number 81-24, An Ordnance Concerning Zoning, Commercial, and Industrial Districts, Electric Vehicle Repair, Electric Vehicle Towing, and Storage.
Thank you. This is actually my bill. We did take a moment to amend this bill at our last meeting, which cleaned up some language. I appreciate the collaboration of the administration. This bill adds electric vehicle repair and electric vehicle towing and storage as a use in our chart. Happy to answer any questions. Did the administration want to add anything at this time?
We support this legislation.
I appreciate that. Are there any questions? We'll now open the public hearing on Bill Number 81-24. Madam Secretary, did we receive any testimony through the online testimony tool?
No, Madam Chair, we did not.
We don't have anyone signed up in advance. If there's anyone in the audience at this time that wishes to speak on Bill 81-24, you may come forward at this time. Seeing no movement in the audience, the public hearing on Bill Number 81-24 is now closed. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number 81-24.
Bill Number 81-24, An Ordnance Concerning Zoning, Commercial, and Industrial Districts, Electric Vehicle Repair, Electric Vehicle Towing, and Storage.
If there are any... I would just ask for my colleague's support on this. There's no other comments. Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Bill Number 81-24.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Volkey?
Aye.
Ms. Hummer?
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler?
Aye.
Ms. Radbien?
Aye.
Ms. Ledbetter?
Aye.
And Ms. Pickard?
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Bill Number 81-24 has passed.
Thank you. Bill Number 82... Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number 82-24.
Bill Number 82-24, An Ordnance Concerning Real Property Taxes Tax Credits Retired Veterans. Mr. Smith, this is your bill. You have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is simply an effort to address an issue that has been occurring since we passed this bill some time ago. Because the cost of homes have been going up, we've had veterans who have qualified for this tax benefit in previous years, because the value of the home and inflation has impacted their property, they no longer qualify for it. So all I did was, before, was that if you're... You qualified for this bill if your house was 500K or less. And so because of the housing market and the cost of homes, it just brings it up to the level of where the VA is for this area on VA loans. And so if you are a veteran, and you go try to get a VA loan, you're going to be in that 780, sort of 800K range. So I just made it match where the VA is right now on issuing loans to veterans who are trying to purchase a home, so that they can continue to receive this credit for those that have applied for it, and to try our best to capture as many of them as possible. As we said before, I think the number that we're helping now is a very small number, probably something less than maybe 150 in that ballpark, which isn't a lot, considering we have well over 50,000, 60,000 veterans who live here in Anaronda County. For the record, I do not qualify for this bill, just making sure that's known. And I thought it was something to help all the veterans who live in this area continue to receive it, so.
Administration like to comment on Bill Number 82-24?
Sure. Just very briefly, the administration is comfortable with this bill and its... In the posture that it's in. As with any tax credit program, the cost of the program is distributed... Is redistributed among other property taxpayers, but as the sponsor mentioned, the total value of this program is relatively low.
Are there any questions? Ms. Ledbetter?
Not a question, but just a statement. I mentioned this at our last council meeting. I do have members of my family who are veterans. I disclosed that to the Ethics Commission, asked for their opinion on whether or not I was able to participate in this legislation, and they did give me their approval to go ahead and participate, but just wanted to put it out there publicly that that is the situation.
Ms. Radbien?
Thank you. And one last disclosure. My husband is a veteran, but he does not qualify as a retired veteran under this bill, so I would not apply. This would not apply to me.
Thank you. Ms. Hummer?
And yes, full disclosure, my husband is a veteran, but we do not qualify for this bill either.
Well, my dad's a veteran too, but he doesn't live in the state of Maryland, so all's well. So with that, we'll now open the public hearing on Bill 82-24. Madam Secretary, did we receive any testimony through the online testimony tool?
Yes, Madam Chair. We received two pieces, which have been shared with the council, added to the record, and posted to the website.
I have no one signed up in advance. We'll now call on individuals who... In the audience who might want to come forward to speak on Bill 82-24. State your name and address for the record, and you have two minutes.
Hello, my name is Katie Eman, and I'm from West River. I'm here tonight in support for Ross and Dale Moreland of Shady Oaks Turf Farm.
Oh, ma'am.
Oh, sorry. My apologies.
We'll bring you back up in a minute.
She should be a veteran, because she was motivated.
Very motivated, yep.
The public hearing on Bill 82-24 is now closed. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill 82-24.
Bill Number 82-24, An Ordnance Concerning Real Property Taxes Tax Credits Retired Veterans.
Seeing no lights from my colleagues, I think we're ready to vote. Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Bill 82-24.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Volkey?
Aye.
Ms. Hummer?
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler?
Aye.
Ms. Radbien?
Aye.
Ms. Ledbetter?
Aye.
And Ms. Pickard?
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Bill Number 82-24 has passed.
Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill 83-24.
Bill Number 83-24, An Ordnance Concerning Approval of the First Amendment to Farm Rental Lease Between Anaronda County, Maryland and Shady Oaks Turf Farm Incorporated.
This is administration bill?
Thank you. So Mr. Ni is going to start by giving an explanation of the lease that's in this bill, and then I'll provide a couple of additional comments at the end.
Yes. So this bill is an approval of the First Amendment Farm Rental Lease between Anaronda County as landlord and Shady Oaks Turf Farm as a tenant. The county in Shady Oaks entered the lease on October 1st, 2022. The tenant leased 115 acres of farmland at Rockhold Creek Farm. Shady Oaks has entered into leases and subleases with the county at this property going back to 2006. The existing lease between the two parties expired at the end of September, and both parties desire to extend the lease term. This amendment will extend the lease term for 10 additional years, which would commence effective on October 1st, 2024, and will expire on September 30th, 2034. Rent will be $1,800 for each year, and there will be... There are no scheduled rent increases. Both parties have the option to terminate the lease with 120... 120 days advanced written notice to the other party.
So the county has focused on agricultural education and programming at this site, including renovation of the barn to benefit youth ag activities through the 4-H Club and Southern High School partnerships. In addition, the County Department of Recreation and Parks offered ag camp in the summer of 2024, and the youth ag program leaders have been very supportive of this lease with the local farmer who grows corn, beans, hay, and raises cattle on about a third of the total property. And in partnership with the county, we've always believed that these ag uses are compatible with equestrian activities, particularly trail riding. The county executive is aware of kind of the equestrian community's requests related to this legislation, and he directed the Department of Recreation and Parks to engage with the equestrian community on trails and other equestrian uses at this property and more broadly. And my understanding is that our director of the Department of Recreation and Parks does have a meeting now set up with that community at the beginning of December. And we look forward to that conversation and having an engaged user group to have that conversation with.
Thank you. Are there any questions regarding Bill 83-24 at this time? Mr. Volkey?
Thank you. Are we currently going month-to-month? What's the lease at this point, since it expired at the end of September?
Go ahead.
Stephen Walker, Central Services. We were current... The lease just expired. It was for two years.
It expired September 30th?
Correct.
So that was a month and a half ago?
Correct.
So are they paying rent?
They've paid rent. They've given us a check for their new lease, obviously if it's approved.
Okay.
But, yeah.
I guess... The reason I'm asking this is, we've heard feedback from the equestrian community. You've just explained the county exec has directed Rakin Parks to meet out to the equestrian community. That's great that that's happening, but it hasn't happened yet. So we don't know yet whether their concerns have been addressed or not. So the issue that I'm thinking in my mind is, is there a way we can kick this down the road a little bit to see what the equestrian community comes back and says, and whether they're satisfied with the outcome of that, and whether everybody's been able to find some solution that's agreeable for all. And I'm not quite sure if there would be any prejudice to anyone involved. If we did that, it sounds like we're kind of in a month-to-month situation where everybody is operating under the assumption this lease is going to get renewed, but I'm just suggesting, maybe we give it a little more time, so that meeting can happen in the beginning of December, before we, as a council, have to approve this one way or the other for 10 years, not knowing whether the equestrian community is going to be satisfied with whatever the outcome is. So I guess my question to you, taking all that information together, is, what are the problems with doing that? Like withholding this bill and pushing this out a little bit, so that there can be some time for all parties to figure out if they're pleased with the resolution?
So I think, unless Mr. Walker has anything to add, I think my response is that this has been a longstanding tenant. He's been a good actor. He's worked well with the county, with the community, and the communities in that area is very supportive of him. We also recognize that the uses... His uses of the property are not inconsistent with equestrian trails. He's using 115 acres of nearly 400 total acres. So I think we are hopeful that we can accommodate all of these different compatible uses together, and I don't know that we see a reason to kind of push out the renewal of this lease.
Madam Chair, thank you. But what's the harm? That's my question. Like, I'm not casting aspersions on anybody involved, because all of them may be wonderful actors, and everybody may have all the best intentions. My question is, what's the harm in giving it a little bit of time to see what happens? I'm not hearing that there is any. So unless there's something I'm missing, that's what I'm trying to uncover.
I mean, I think the harm is that this tenant does... We're trying to provide a situation where there's no gap in his tenancy at this location, and I think pushing it out does provide some uncertainty as to, you know, the future of his ability to lease at this location.
May I follow up?
You may.
So he's going to find another 115 acres where he can do everything he's doing right now, the tenant, and be able to move on and go somewhere else? I just... I don't see that as super realistic. Like, finding attractive land that big in this county is not exactly an easy thing. So it seems to me like if everybody is sort of moving along in the same direction, county's certainly not going to evict this tenant who's been a very good tenant, so the county's not going to be pursuing ousting him. So I'm just struggling to hear what the problem would be with allowing everybody a little bit more time to see if a resolution can be had, especially when the county executives got involved to direct Rakin Parks to meet with the equestrian community and try to come up with a compromise. That seems like the most reasonable course.
Christine Niederer with the Office of Law. I just wanted to add also, I didn't want to speak on real estates, you know, I just wanted to add to them that the negotiations have been going on since, I believe, midsummer, and I think that the intent was always to renew prior to the expiration of the current lease, and that's be correct. And I don't know exactly the... Why that happened, but definitely I would say that I believe real estate has been working with the tenant to make sure that there wasn't a gap.
This is a question for the Office of Law. I mean, it seems like we don't want to have a tenant on county land outside of a lease.
That is correct.
That seems to be legally shaky.
Certainly, we wanted to. The ideal situation would have had been that we would have entered into and had this lease approved prior to the expiration of the current lease. Yes.
Dum dum dum.
No. It's not really funny.
Ms. Radbien?
Thank you. Would it be fair to say, though, without renewing this lease, some of the programming and the different events hosted by the current tenant and on this property could possibly be put in jeopardy? I know it's, you know, in our minds, it's only November, but I know when planning, summer is like right around the corner.
I think that's a fair question, and I don't know that any of us can say for... With certainty what the outcome of those programs would be, but I think that's certainly a fair question, especially your point that there needs, you know, for a lot of these things, there's some planning time needed as well, so.
Mr. Smith?
I want to be brief. We don't have any other leases that are... Might need to come to the council that are pending their expiration that won't find themselves in this situation here? Is this the only one that's in that current situation?
Stephen Walker, Central Services.
Yes. Okay, thank you.
Ms. Ledbetter?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I took some time. This past week, I actually went out and I visited the tenant, the farm in question, and I just think it is important for the council to recognize that this is an active farm that produces food and fiber for the community, and it is a business. And as a business, just like any other business, there is long-term planning that needs to take place, and so there is an importance of making sure that we do give them that security for the ability to long-term and not continue to drag our feet. Sounds like we've taken some delays as it is, to your point about what's the harm of waiting a little bit longer. And I do believe the tenant might be here tonight to testify and might be able to speak a little bit more personally about that and more articulate... Be more articulate than I am, as I have not yet walked a day in their shoes.
Are there any further questions at this time? We'll now open the public hearing on Bill 83-24. Madam Secretary, did we receive any testimony through the online testimony tool?
Yes, Madam Chair. We received eight pieces, which have been shared with the council, added to the record, and posted to the website.
We did have... We do have speakers signed up in advance. I will call on speakers in groups of six. I have Arnel Kwashi, Jackie Cohen, Catherine Emin, Jackie Guild, Janice Binkley, and Joy Sim. The first six on my list. I have Arnel Kwashi.
That is I. Arnel Kwashi, Gramerals. I'm representing the University of Maryland, Extension in the College of Agriculture and Natural Resources. 4H is a youth development program that strives to educate and empower young people, the next generation, with the skills to lead for a lifetime. Anaronda County 4H serves over 250 youth and growing with over 125 adult volunteers. The use of Rockhold Creek Farm provides opportunities for our 4H youth to engage in hands-on learning experiences in agriculture and animal husbandry. Currently, we have a club that uses the land for 4H programming, that houses their animals and use the land and space to learn about and care and raising of livestock animals. Youth display their hard work annually at the Anaronda County Fair and the Maryland State Fair. By extending the lease at Rockhold Creek Farm for 10 years, you can focus on expanding... We can focus on expanding our agriculture and livestock services... Excuse me, livestock animal programming offered to Anaronda County youth. Programming on this farm develops youth self-esteem, build leadership, self-reliance, responsibility, connection, and compassion.
Thank you. Ms. Cohen, am I saying that right?
Yes, thank you. I'm Jackie Cowan. I'm from Crownsville, Maryland, and I am the Anaronda County Coordinator for Trot Trail Riders of Today. And I thank you all for the opportunity to speak as a follow-up to my November 11th email to you in regard to the use and extended lease of the Rockhold Creek Farm. I am here to assure you that our intention is not to push Mr. Moreland off the property, whether it is to advocate for shared use and keeping with the original concept of the property for equestrian and public use, along with his continued agricultural use, as well as the 4H and programs that are there, and I believe we can enhance those as well. there, and I believe we can enhance those as well. As we move forward with recreation and parks to talk about the much-needed expanded trail access for county equestrians, I believe we could bring volunteers and grant money to help offset costs of trails for the Rockhold Creek Farm. We hope you will consider a temporary, short-term lease tonight in lieu of the 10-year commitment or an amendment to afford the exploration of shared use on the property between Mr. Moreland and the public, including trail riders. Agriculture and trail riding exists successfully together throughout Maryland and beyond. I believe we can find a similar agreement and partnership for the Rockhold Farm that will provide access and enjoyment to fellow Anarundel County hikers and equestrians if time can be afforded to do so with your action tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Catherine Emin?
Emin from West River, back again. I'm here in support of Ross and Dale Moreland of Shady Oaks Turf Farm. My family has had the privilege of knowing Ross and Dale since we first moved to our property in 2007, and our house, which was the original part of the large farm acreage, is positioned 20 yards facing Ross and Dale's cow pasture. We are their direct neighbors. They've been maintaining and farming the former Kinder Farm family parcel since the county acquired it in 2006 seamlessly. They manage about 115 acres of property where they have a herd of black Angus cattle. They plant crops and hay what's left of all the surrounding fields. They maintain all the fence line and all the surrounding farm buildings in as long as the well. Ross is also a mentor and a resource to Southern's 4H Club, which used the newly restored barn on the property. Everyone knows in South County that Ross and Dale are the hardest-working, most committed farmers you will ever know. We literally see them three to four times a day, from dawn to dark, 365 days a year, for almost 20 years. We consider them family. Without their care on the lands and deals of the property seamlessly, they're gonna, the farmland will rapidly grow up into an impenetrable thicket of weedy and invasive plants. If this property wants to be used for equestrian use later, it has to be maintained from now seamlessly, and it has to be mowed, intended, and cared for and planted all year round. And the farm buildings, the outbuildings need to be maintained. They will crumble into ruin as the barn almost did just a few years ago. We strongly urge the council to preserve actual farming in Anarundel County with the best farmers and stewards of the county and extend the property lease to Ross and Shady Oaks Turf Farm. Like our license plates say, our farms, our future. Please put the future of the farm in the hands of these capable county council, planning with the equestrian community, and Ross and Dale and the Morelands. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Jackie Guild?
Good evening. My name is Jackie Guild. I reside at 3966 Germantown Road in Edgewater, and I oppose the bill as written, and it's because it's for too long of a period of time. I appreciate the comments of Mr. Volkey and his suggestion to postpone this for just a period of time. We have capable attorneys here in the county. They, I'm an attorney as well. It's very simple to amend a lease contract for a period of time to extend it to bridge the period between the end of the lease and to have the meeting that's coming up very soon. This lease, you know, of course, the equestrian community does not oppose agricultural on its property. Agricultural activities and equestrian activities coexist and complement each other everywhere. Agricultural use and equestrian use are appropriate at this property, as other activities are, and there's not been an opportunity for other activities to even be advertised or solicited for this property. So, the process is a little broken here. The county has demonstrated with the Crownsville property that when it wants to, it can actively engage and solicit the community's opinions about what should happen at a property. That has not happened here. So, that also needs to happen. But 10 years is a long time, and I think that this actively needs to be looked at. What does the community want to happen here? And where should the farming happen? How much farming should happen? What other activities should happen here? I work in the climate and sustainable activities space professionally, and I know that there were other nonprofits out there that would have jumped at the chance for an $1,800 a year lease. That is very cheap. I know that there are other sustainable agricultural practices that would have perhaps wanted to operate here as well, and that has not been advertised anywhere yet. I know that in Edgewater, there is a five-acre operation called Wildkid Acres. They very much would have liked to have bid on this. I know they submitted some testimony as well, and they engaged with the community.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Janice Binkley?
Right here. I live in Millersville, but I run an equestrian facility in Davidsonville. My concern about Bill 83-24 is possibly the lease would grant substantive control of the land. And I believe farming and equestrian use can go hand-in-hand. It does everywhere. As an instructor, to find open land for riders to get an experience outside of a ring is becoming more and more difficult. Half the time, we have to haul to outside the county, and most of the shows that we do are outside the county. I'm not proposing showing at Rockhold Creek, just trail riding. So, I took a look at the map, and Mr. Moreland wants to have the lease of 115 acres on five fields. The rest is either dredge spoils that have a huge chain link fence around them, that's 25 acres. Rockhold Creek itself divides right through the middle, so I'm pretty sure there's going to be some critical areas and swampy bits. So, that severely cuts back the amount of actual open space to ride. So, I agree with Councilman Volk about possibly postponing the lease. I have a meeting December 5th, which is Thursday, coming up, and it would be wonderful if we could get through that meeting with Parks and Recs and then figure out the lease after that, because my vision is that, you know, these equestrian trails wouldn't just be relegated to the woods and swampy areas, but to be able to traverse around open fields, because that is the mental health benefit of riding, is seeing open space. And I think the two can go hand-in-hand quite easily. I mean, I think 4H has been amazing with their job with the barn, so I support all that.
Thank you. Joy Sim?
Hello. My name is Joy Sim, and I work for the University of Maryland Extension, Anarundel County 4H Youth Development Program. I wanted to give you a quick overview of the importance of this facility and the importance it has in our community. Rockhold Creek Farm is used by members of the Harwood 4H Club, which consists of about 25 youth, most of whom keep several animals used as projects throughout the year. Through the daily caretaking of these animals, they learn valuable life skills, such as responsibility and citizenship. These livestock account for about one-third of the animals in our county fair livestock auction and the animals in the animal science programs conducted in our county 4H program. Many of the youth in this club do not have private access to land to house their animals. A lease extension to Shady Oaks Farm would benefit our youth because they may continue to expand their knowledge in agriculture, farming, health, and food systems. This property and the barn used on it is important to agriculture education, animal research, and is an investment in the future land, our future land caretakers. Extending the term of this lease is an important commitment to all of our futures.
Thank you. This panel is dismissed. I have Deana Tice, also signed up in advance. And that's the end of folks that have signed up in advance. We still have six other seats. If there are other people in the audience that intend to testify this evening, you can come up at this time. When you're ready, ma'am, you have two minutes. State your name and address for the record.
Hi, I'm Deana Tice. I'm from Blair Lane in Harwood, Maryland. I'm a full-time farmer here to speak in favor of Bill 83-24. Shady Oaks Turf Farm and the Moreland brothers have proven to be good stewards of the farm and should be allowed to have a 10-year lease so they may invest in lime, fertilizer, fencing, fall planting, and other materials to make their farming practice more beneficial to the local community. We certainly learned during COVID how important local food production is. I'm a member of the Friends of Rockhold Farm Barn. We manage the barn for agriculture education for 4H and FFA members to raise their livestock projects. We pay the electric and we manage the to-do list of the barn. The Morelands are great to work with and support the endeavors of agriculture education on the farm. Our county is one of two counties in the entire state of Maryland that does not have an official ag education center. Thankfully, the Rockhold Creek Barn is becoming one in District 7, and the Moreland family are showing the community how a well-run farm can run just outside the window of that barn. They are great examples. I manage three farms composing 450 acres with 100 horses in Harwood. I am a lifetime equestrian and friends of the people that just spoke with you. I feel this farm can be utilized for all. As the newly-elected president of the Anarundel County Farm Bureau, whose mission is to protect and promote agriculture, including horses, I would be willing to support the equestrian community with a work group to formalize the plans for the equestrian access, including who will manage the area, how it will be paid for, implemented, and maintained. This means attending many meetings to request money from the county as well as grants.
Thank you. Go ahead.
Hi, my name is Anna Chaney. I'm from Lothian, Maryland, and I am a lifelong resident. I'm a 13th-generation Anarundel County resident, and my lineage is all in farming. I'm currently farming at Honey's Harvest Farm, and Mr. Moreland is a third-generation farmer. And my understanding of that particular property is that it's been over 400 acres, of which I believe up to 300 at one time he was farming. And while I hear we don't want to push him off the farm, I'm also hearing something that sounds very much like that. He's only asking for 115-acre lease, and I am also the chair of the Regional 8 Planning Commission. And the number-one goal so far in that region is to preserve sustainable, functional, profitable agriculture in Region 8. And so, therefore, I think that we have a lease that is very appropriate. It's very fair. It is honoring what exactly the citizens, the residents, and the visitors of Southern Anarundel County in Region 8 wish for. I have a farm store, and people come and say, "We came here because we saw your little signs on the road, and we want to support farming in this area because we know if we don't, it's going to go away." So, I ask you tonight to please support this bill. I am also an equestrian. I have, I'm a lifelong rider. My daughter rides. My son is a farmer, and if my daughter were to ride where he's farming, it would not be safe. So, we need to realize that there are 300-plus acres that can be used for that equestrian, and that I think we have someone right, sitting right next to me here, who's more than willing to work with that. She is an equestrian herself and relies on that for her living. So, I think that this lease is very fair the way it is written. I think it should be supported tonight, and I think everybody can work together to make sure that farming remains one of our number-one sources of income and industry in Region 8. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Sir? State your name and address for the record. You have two minutes.
William Ford, Harwood, Maryland. I've known Ross and Dale Moreland for over 50 years. Their father got me into farming when I was 13. I am 60 now. I farm just at 500 acres between Crownsville and Friendship. Every bit of that ground is leased. I ask for a 10-year lease. Most of them are five-year leases. It's very hard for me to run a 500-acre farm, and I work full-time also with my wife, and to make solid business decisions based on what we're going to have available next year or the year after. I think it's been said tonight that the county executive does promote agriculture in any shape and form, and also open space. I don't think this is too much to ask for somebody who has been leasing this property since 2006 and has taken care of it like his own. I'm all for giving Ross and Dale the lease for 10 years, and like every couple other people have said tonight, that the finer details on the equestrian park can be worked out. There's over 300 acres. He's got 115, so I would hope that you guys would vote yes to extend the lease, and because he is working right now without a lease, and that's not good. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Sir?
I'm Ross Moreland, Shady Oaks Turf Farm, with my brother Dale. We've, we're third-generation farmers, and I'm the one that's causing all the problems tonight. I think everybody, I think everybody's kind of in the wrong direction. We're talking about a farm that's 400 acres roughly. All I'm asking for is the 115 acres that we've been working for the last, I don't know, 20 years right now. Most 300 acres. Every year, it was getting slower, lower and lower, and we don't have any intention against, we don't have any problem with the horse people, okay? It's separate from what we're asking for. So, have at it. I don't, every year, we go through this year after year, and every year, we have to ask our attorney, Ms. Reinhardt, to go over the lease again. Then, it takes three months, and it costs. And all I'm asking for, or all we're asking for, is the lease to be renewed for 10 years so we can get some stability, do some drainage problems, and barn issues. We have worked with the 4H. We've given up buildings for them to use. All we want, I mean, all we want to do is work and make a living. I mean, you know, everybody's making an issue about the horses. There's 200-plus acres that I'm not, that we're not involved with. So, it's separate from what we want to do. And I think Mrs. Ledbetter saw that the other day. She's the only one that took the time, and I'm going to take a little bit more time, is...
Sir?
Took the time to come down and view it, to talk to you all, so...
Thank you. Thank you for coming down. Ma'am?
I'm Julia Reinhardt. I'm their attorney, and I'm not sure whether, I'm not trying to do anything unethical here if I'm lobbying. May I speak or not?
Uh, we would...
I'm not registered as a lobbyist. I'm here to take, Mr. Volkey asked some questions that were actually specific legal issues, and I wanted to address them.
She can do that?
Ms. Nider can obviously speak for the county behind afterward as to what I say.
Okay.
You had another attorney speak in the audience?
Sure, go ahead.
Okay. So, this is not a standard residential lease. To get to your point, Mr. Volkey, it's an agricultural lease. Typically, they have six-month notice requirements anyway, and you're allowed to harvest your crop after the lease term's over. What's unfair about delaying this is, as he said, the expense, the, every year, they're putting tens of thousands of dollars' worth of expense out, getting prepped for the crop that's next being sown. So, that's a big deal to defer this. Over the winter, there's things that get done. And I grew up on a farm. I grew up on, my family leases their farmland, but I can guarantee you, they're leasing it in the fall, and they have to know what they're doing. They can't, they can't just be hung out like that. So, I mean, whatever it's going to be, it needs to be done so that they can plant.
Thank you. Sir? State your name and address for the record. You have two minutes.
Marco Bulmer. I live in Davidsonville. I farm 150 acres. I'm here in support of the Morelands and the lease as it's currently written. Mr. Volkey, to your questions, I encourage you to come and have a tour around the local working farms to understand a little bit how to address some of your questions. Farming requires planning. Farming requires planning. Farming is very uncertain. Farming requires massive adaptation at the moment. We are seeing significant impacts from extreme weather and from climate change. So obviously, at the moment, we're in a drought to severe drought. So Mr. Morland has to think very hard about his cattle, the health of his cattle, when he's going to plant, when he's going to seed, when he's going to do his applicants, how he's going to do all of that, his machinery. When is he going to spend the time doing the maintenance/ozzy's machinery as opposed to being out with his cattle? All of this requires planning and time. So in answer to your question, I really encourage you to come out and have a little bit more understanding about what it takes to run an agricultural business. With regards to the option of horses and agriculture, I don't altogether agree with some of the statements that I've heard tonight, particularly when it comes to beef cattle and large animals. There is clearly a number of very successful opportunities that can already be seen where trail-riding has been done with local agriculture, but it does require a little bit of time. Not all horses are comfortable around big animals, so it does require coordination and cooperation. Thank you.
Thank you. This panel is dismissed. Is there anyone else in the audience that wishes to speak on Bill 83-24 at this time? State your name and address for the record, and you have two minutes.
Paul Higgins, Pasadena, Maryland. Lot of discussion tonight on farming and value, but I feel like this is a business decision. This is the county government. We are here to take care of the basic needs, okay? Public safety. This is not the local farm bureau where you can come and get some land now. At the same time, I know that Parks and Recreation is one of the kind of hidden gems in this county. And I know that Parks and Recreation works grant programs and things with local sports organizations to take care of property and things of that nature. It's just getting a little frustrating to hear us buying grain towers and doing different things in South County when that's not what we're here for. I'm not taking anything away from the people that are here. There's a lot of equestrian businesses up in the Pasadena area, and I deal with those people. None of them are getting a lease like this. So I don't take that away from anybody that's here trying to make a living, but at the same time, I think we need to be wise on how we move forward. That's all.
Thank you, sir. The public hearing on Bill 83-24 is now closed. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill 83-24.
Bill Number 83-24, Inordnis Concerning Approval of the First Amendment to Farm Rental Lease Between Anarundale County, Maryland and Shady Oaks Turf Farm Incorporated.
Mr. Volkey.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm going to make a motion to hold this until the second meeting in December. That's the 16th of December. I've been in communication with Ms. Lays, who's the director of Wreckin' Parks. I believe her meeting with the equestrian groups is on the 5th of December. If it was earlier than that, I would make the motion that this be held until the first meeting in December, but because it's afterward, that's why I'm making the motion. To be clear, no one is trying to kick anybody who's a good tenant out. You've been in the two-year lease before this. You're going to a 10-year lease, right? So when we're talking about business decisions and planning, candidly, Wreckin' Parks can do a one-year lease with you, and they could do that without council approval. You all aren't doing that. You're not doing it because it's a better business decision to try to get the 10 years, and I get it and fully understand it, and I support the idea of what you all are doing, and I want you to be able to do it. I'm talking about giving a month so that everybody can be heard. Whether everybody reaches an agreement or not, that's a different animal, right? That's not what our discussion is. Our discussion is about allowing people to be heard from both sides because this is coming down the line, and it's coming in front of this body, and we have to vote one way or the other. So that's the purpose of asking for a hold. It's not to say to Mr. Morland, "You should get off the property." That's not it at all. Sounds like from all accounts of everybody, you're doing a wonderful job over there. Sounds like the equestrian folks like you. Sounds like you have a good synergy over there. So let's try not to get this twisted when I put this up, because this isn't saying we're against anything. It's simply about giving an opportunity for people to be heard. That's all this is about. The county executive has directed Wreckin' Parks to have this meeting with the equestrian groups. Let them have the meeting, and then let's figure it out. Before we approve a 10-year lease, let's make sure everybody at least had the opportunity to be heard. That's the purpose. I'm making the motion. So again, do you need any clarity, or do you understand my motion? Cool, thank you.
Can you repeat their motion?
Yeah, hold this until December 16th meeting.
Is there a second? Motion fails. Do we have any other questions or comments regarding Bill 83-24 at this time? Ms. Feedler.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I don't know how much you can disclose about the lease agreement, but is there any language that says that the current, well, previous, hopefully soon-to-be leasing is the exclusive leaseholder of all or part of the land? I just want to make sure that there is an opening for an additional leasing in the future.
Christine Nieder, Office of Law. This lease is just with this one tenant, and it specifies the amount of acreage, which means that the remaining acreage is not currently leased. That answers your-
Yes, Madam Chair, may I-
Sure.
It does answer my question. I just want to make sure that there's no language that says that they are the exclusive leasing of all of the property regardless of the acreage that-
No, it specifies the acreage, and it also includes an exhibit which shows that the area that they are leasing.
Great, thank you.
Ms. Radvian.
Thank you. Could you just clarify? I heard 115 acres currently leased and proposed to be leased. What is the total acreage and what would be available, you know, for other possible uses, including equestrian uses?
Stephen Walker, Central Services. So we're looking at probably an additional 200 or so acres that would actually be able to be leased because they are leasing 115 or so about that Mount Shaker acreage.
Ms. Ledbetter.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I will be supporting this bill tonight, but I did want to make a statement particularly about the equestrian uses. I'm grateful for the conversations that I had with the county executive's team about the importance of making sure that we move forward and we continue those conversations and engage in a meaningful way to develop trail access, not just at one specific property, but also looking at the county as a whole. I think that's a conversation that really does need to happen, and I also wanted to give credit to Director Lays for acting so quickly to set up that first meeting. I will be following that closely because I do think that this is also an important issue to track. But I, with that in mind, I will be supporting the bill.
Ms. Feedler.
Oh, sorry.
I don't have any other questions or comments from my colleagues. Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Bill 83-24.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Mr. Volkey.
Abstain.
Ms. Hummer.
Aye.
Ms. Feedler.
Aye.
Ms. Radvian.
Aye.
Ms. Letter.
Aye.
Ms. Ledbetter, excuse me, and Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
Six and the affirmative, one abstain. Bill Number 83-24 has passed.
Thank you. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number 84-24.
Bill Number 84-24, Inordnis Concerning Public Works Watershed Protection and Restoration Program, Waiver of Interest on Overdue Fees.
Ms. Hummer, this is your bill. You have the floor.
Um, yes. This bill allows currently our stormwater fees, they're very limited incidents where interest and penalties could be waived. This is a narrow exception to allow for nonprofits to have not the actual bill itself, but interest and penalties waived to bring them up to speed. So I ask for your support.
Would the administration like to weigh in on Bill 84-24?
Just to say that we support this bill and allowing the option of waiving the penalties and interests as Ms. Hummer described.
Are there any que, Mr. Volkey?
Thank you. Are there any entities that are nonprofit entities in the county that presently have interest in fees due and owing to the county?
Yeah. Eric Michelson, Department of Public Works, Watershed Protection and Restoration Program. There is a specific example that this bill came to our attention as a result of. The Maryland City Civic Association is an entity that has outstanding late fees, and they would be subject to this bill.
How much?
Their interest in penalties due as of the end of October are $2,671.31. Once they pay their balance of WPRF fees, that will be $5,111.31 that will be returned to the Watershed Protection Restoration Fund.
Can I follow up?
Yes.
Is that the only nonprofit in the county that this bill would impact?
This is the only case that we're aware of, but that doesn't mean that that's the only one that would impact necessarily.
Ms. Hummer.
Yes, so just wanted to clarify. We have some community associations, homeowners associations that have been existence for a very long time that own community property and that the associations have become defunct over time. And if a new entity wants to come in and restart the community association, they need to bring these properties up to speed. That's the case here, that we're trying to restart and have another entity take over this property, and this is a way to help them to bring this up to speed. And there may be others that we'll find as well. This is kind of an unusual case, but I know that they are not the only community association, for instance, that is no longer in effect but could be started up again.
Ms. Feedler.
Thank you, Madam Chair. How often does this scenario arise where previously active community association goes defunct and then tries to come back online?
Yeah, I've been with the county almost 11 years, and this is the first time I think this particular scenario has come up. And so there are a variety of other sort of oddball scenarios that have arisen with the stormwater fee now that we've had it in place about 10 years, and we're talking about bringing a package of changes maybe in a couple months to the county council. But this particular issue was one that we tried to look at and work with the finance office and deal with administratively, and we just felt like the right solution was to have a legislative change.
Let me ask a follow-up.
Of course.
In this scenario, in addition to the fees, has the maintenance, is the maintenance also a factor? Has it fallen behind? I mean, I know that there's costs associated with maintaining stormwater management on HOA properties.
So this is a case where there's existing impervious on the HOA property, a parking lot essentially, and so that's what's generating the charge itself.
Okay, thank you.
Any further questions regarding 84-24? Would the administration like to add anything before we go to public hearing?
Nope.
We'll now open the public hearing on Bill 84-24. Madam Secretary, did we receive any testimony through the online testimony tool?
No, Madam Chair, we did not.
We have no one signed up in advance. Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to speak on Bill 84-24 at this time? Seeing no movement in the audience, the public hearing on Bill 84-24 is now closed. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill 84-24.
Bill Number 84-24, Inordnis Concerning Public Works Watershed Protection and Restoration Program, Waiver of Interest on Overdue Fees.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Bill 84-24.
Mr. Smith. Mr. Volkey. Ms. Hummer. Ms. Feedler. Ms. Radvian.
Aye.
Ms. Ledbetter.
Aye.
And Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
Six and the affirmative, one and the negative. Bill Number 84-24 has passed.
Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill 85-24.
Bill Number 85-24, Inordnis Concerning Pensions, General Provisions, Purchased Service Credits, Fire Service Retirement Plan, and Police Service Retirement Plan.
Thank you. 85-24 is actually my bill. This bill allows members of the police service and fire service retirement plans to purchase up to a maximum of five years of service credit if hired as a lateral employee from another agency in a Maryland jurisdiction. We've discussed this previously about a year ago, and we've brought this forward, excuse I'm just taking a break. My last bill as chair, and it's mine. You're being rude. I would ask for everyone's support. We've spoke of this bill extensively. Would the administration like to weigh in on Bill 85-24 at this time?
So we do support this bill with the understanding that there is a cost associated, as discussed at the work session, but again, we do support this bill.
Are there any comments or questions before we open the public hearing on Bill 85-24? Seeing none, we'll now open the public hearing on Bill 85-24. Madam Secretary, did we receive any testimony through the online testimony tool?
No, Madam Chair, we did not.
I don't have anyone signed up in advance, but I see three individuals coming forward at this time. You may come forward. State your name and address for the record, and you have two minutes. We'll start here.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Stanley Newborn, and I am on the board of Anarundale County Fraternal Order of Police. We are asking for your support of Bill 85-24. We strongly believe this bill will assist our police department and fire department, but most importantly, our police department with recruitment and hiring of lateral police officers. A lateral police officer is a state-certified officer that has been trained by another agency but wants to come and work with Anarundale County. Why is it important to hire lateral police officers? Great question. First, when we hire a lateral, they only need a few weeks of familiarization training to become operational and begin providing service to our community. This is in contrast to an entry-level officer who comes with no experience, no training, or no certification, and requires nearly a year of training before they provide any service to the county. That means for nearly a year, the county is paying salary benefits to an officer while getting practically no service to the county. The cost is over $100,000 per officer. As you saw in Mr. Shire's email last week, the cost per officer for a lateral hire under Bill 85-24 is far less than that amount. Another benefit of lateral officers is the experience they bring to our agency. Experience is simultaneously the best way to improve a police officer's abilities and the most time-consuming way to improve a police off, oh, I said the same thing twice. As we try to increase our agency staffing to acceptable levels, we cannot only hire entry-level officers, or we will be an agency with a huge experience gap. Hiring lateral officers ensures that we keep our overall average level of police experience higher than if we hire a vast number of entry-level officers. Lateral officers bring enormous value to our county, and we need officers. By the county executive's own estimates, we are 350 officers under staff. Officers continue to work to exhaustion. We are currently at the lowest number of line-level officers we have seen in nearly five years. We should have turned the tide of hiring years ago. We have to find ways to incentivize working for our police department now. The number-one question we get when we are trying to recruit lateral officers is, "Will you allow me to buy my pension time?" Please help us start answering this question with a yes by supporting Bill 85-24.
Thank you.
Good evening. You may know me as Mike Shire from my greatest hits such as The Pension Oversight Commission and The Fraternal Order of Police and many, many more. I'm here with the FOP tonight, and just wanted to give some quick history. The proposed changes out of this bill came out of last year's contract negotiations. In our discussion with the county, we made it clear that it's important that our incoming laterals would not have to pay any more than they would be withdrawing from their old pension system. The original county bill had a 3X multiplier in it. You'll notice this one has a 2X multiplier. That 3X multiplier would have had the employee bearing 75% of the burden of the pension credit. We know that that would just be something that those lateral officers would not be able to afford. It would be some $50,000 out of pocket or over the term of the three years that they'd be able to pay it back. That's just too crippling for them, and people wouldn't come for that benefit. The county has to be willing to invest. So we agreed with the administration to do a cost splitting 50-50. That's the 2X multiplier. That's what that gets you. Unfortunately, that was, these changes kind of got stripped out in 93-23, and that brings us here today. You've heard some testimony about the cost of this legislation, but it left out important savings. It left out the savings not only of salary, but also of county pension contributions and benefits that are paid to entry-level recruits while they're in the police academy. County also left out the time that these officers aren't entry-level field- officers are in entry-level field training. That's over three months where they're shadowing a more experienced officer after the eight months that they're in the academy. They haven't shown you the cost of the training that the recruits get. The entry-level recruits require dozens and dozens of instructors, equipment, facilities, costs over that eight-month academy. 85-24 actually creates a cost savings for the county, and honestly, even if it didn't, it would still be worth it. Our police department staffing is not improving. We have not seen such a low level of line officers in years. We have been fighting with the FOP, the FOP has been fighting with the county tooth and nail to work towards recruitment and retention practices that will benefit and attract the best police officers for this county. The county council has acted before in recognition of the need that we have, and we're asking for you to act again in favor of 85-24. Thank you.
Thank you. Sir?
Good evening. O'Brien Atkinson, President of the Anorah County Fraternal Order of Police. Thank you all for taking up this bill and supporting it, hopefully. As you know, and as has been talked about at numerous budget town halls, other meetings, and here, we do not have enough police officers. I hope you're as frustrated hearing it as we are saying it. We, over and over, we all estimate, by all estimates, our agency's needs about 1,300 officers. We're authorized just over 800. We lose about 50 officers per year to retirements and resignations. We are currently suffering a deficit of 41 officers, but we just graduated an academy class of six officers. We just hired a new class, and it has 10 officers. Overtime has been the department's only way to stay afloat, working voluntary overtime, forced overtime, and being voluntold to work all kinds of other overtime. The department recently moved more than two dozen officers out of administrative and investigative positions into patrol to provide some relief for our officers responding to 911 calls. They continue to send detectives out to plug holes in patrol, making it difficult for these detectives to hold the line on their own caseloads. Our officers are facing burnout, but continue to serve with professionalism and dedication. But you can't expect the same level of service or protection with fewer hands on deck. We are still digging our way out from decades of underfunding and understaffing our police department. Bill 85-24 has the potential to save the county money while bringing in experienced law enforcement professionals with proven track records to our jurisdiction. These officers can hit the ground running and will hopefully provide some level of relief. Together, we can ensure that our county remains a place where people can feel safe, where our officers are supported, and where law enforcement can continue to serve with dignity, honor, and pride. Or as the county executive likes to call it, "the best place for all." Thank you.
Thank you. This panel is dismissed. Is there anyone else in the audience that wishes to speak on Bill 85-24 at this time? Seeing no movement, the public hearing on Bill 85-24 is now closed. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill 85-24.
Bill Number 85-24, Inordnance Concerning Pensions, General Provisions, Purchase Service Credits, Fire Service Retirement Plan, and Police Service Retirement Plan.
Are there any questions of my colleagues at this time? Would the administration like to add anything at this time? Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Bill 85-24.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
Ms. Hummer.
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
Ms. Rodvian.
Aye.
Ms. Ledbetter.
Aye.
And Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Bill Number 85-24 has passed.
I think that was our last piece of business for the evening. Is there any business any council member would like to bring before the county council at this time?
Motion to adjourn.
That's my line. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The motion carries. The county council is adjourned until Monday, December 2nd, 2024, for our next legislative session in our chambers. I hope everyone has a joyous and thankful Thanksgiving. Good night.